We have two public hearings that we would like to conduct. And Colin, our county attorney is going to take over and conduct the public hearings.
All right. We have two public hearings on the agenda. The first is with regard to a potential inkeeper's tax. A notice of this was published in the News Banner and other publications, as well as publicly posted by our auditor on the 22nd of November. This means that significant or pertinent amount of time has passed by between public notice being proffered and today's date. And it is, it's listed here on the agenda. The sum and substance of this is that the county is considering the establishment of an inkeeper's tax that would, there would be a tax at 5% on grocery retail income derived from lodging income and is only in addition to gross retail tax imposed under Indiana Code 6-2.5. And also significantly, it would only apply to individuals who are renting accommodation for less than 30 days. So we, this is a public hearing, and so this is a time for, it's not necessarily a time for debate, but it's a time for any individuals from the public who'd like to speak on that. Now, we have another public hearing as well after this, but it's going to look much the same. But I guess at this point, I'd open it to the floor if anybody wanted to speak.
So I'll start it off as Colin indicated. You know, Wells County Chamber in Economic Development is proposing the county move forward on an inkeeper's tax for the allowable collection of up to 5% of the gross income derived from lodging on stays that are less than 30 days. This would impact, you know, hotels, motels, cabins, those types of accommodations throughout the county. The uses of those funds would be directed by a tourism commission that would be created by ordinance through the county commissioners. That tourism commission ordinance calls for appointments to be made by the county commissioners, the county council, the city of Bluffton, and the town of Ossian. The state statute requires that the largest population density area have a certain number of appointments, that being Bluffton. And so that's why they have to have a certain number of appointments to that commission. We would ask then that commission be under the auspices of the Wells County Chamber of Commerce. The funds would then again be directed, their uses and their strategic planning process, marketing plan, and everything would be done by that commission, again, appointed by those government bodies to direct that work. As indicated previously, the revenue that would be created has the potential in the previous chart. If there were half the rooms sold at 365 days a year, it could generate up to $93,000. If 100% of the rooms were sold for 365 days a year, which would be amazing, it would be $246,000 of expected revenue. And that's taken into account the America's Best, Comfort Inn, Budget Inn, the Washington Street Inn, however, which is not actually in place anymore. And KOA has five cabins that would be assessed the rate. Additionally, there was a question that was raised at the last meeting as to whether or not this would, this ordinance would cover any online bookings through such as an Airbnb and a VRBO. And we have confirmed with the Department of Revenue that Lisa just has to notify once this ordinance, or once this resolution or ordinance has been passed. She has an individual, she'll contact to say that the county has moved forward on collecting that. And the collection of the tax would begin 30 days after the adoption. That actually was a Friday. And so what we put in the ordinance is that it would actually start on that following Monday, which would be January the 9th. So that would be starting the collection beginning that January 9th on that Monday. They then have 20 days following the end of the month to report their revenue and taxes to the county tax, or to the county treasurer, who then would be collecting that. There's a form that they would fill out that's a state form. We'll be assisting and working with the treasurer to develop a letter that will go out to all of those businesses that would be affected and need to be conforming to the law.
So it's within the county?
The county collects it and the county will expend it. With the exception of those that are booked through Airbnb, VRBO, and those types of platforms, that is collected by the state, and then the state will then submit those funds to the county treasurer. But all local room bookings would be collected locally, yes. You could do it through the state. I would recommend against that. State's not been the greatest about giving back money.
Why ask the question?
I'll open it up to the floor.
Close of the hearing.
Any more comments on the inkeeper tax? If not, we'll close that public hearing.
The second public hearing is with regard to Paddlefish Solar. On November 9th, the council adopted a declaratory, which is a preliminary resolution regarding creating an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1 at SIC. Notice of this public hearing was published on November 21st, and we are more than 10 days outside of that. So notice is timely. This has to do solely with the creation of these economic revitalization areas within Wells County. And so just like the other one, it's not a debate, but if anybody wants to speak on it, the floor needs to be open and people be allowed to state their comments or objections to it.
Yeah, please come forward if you have comments.
So just to kind of give a brief overview of the proposal, what will come later, and the kind of the why and what it is that we're doing. So this is a public hearing relation to the creation of an economic revitalization area. The economic revitalization area is defined by state statute that allows for tax abatement to be provided within the area. If you guys remember correctly, this area actually is already an ERA. However, we wanted to go through the same process that we previously went so that we can open up for public comment specific to this tax abatement for this project. So again, the, this is really just, it's looking at the specifics of creating an ERA to provide tax abatement for a solar project. The specifics of what that tax abatement is, comes in the later process. Approval of the tax abatement comes into the later process. This is again, just looking at the creation of area and making sure that it meets the statute and the law of why it can be created and what it can be created for. And so I'll let Jesse kind of talk a little bit about the project and the area and why it's defined as it is.
Yeah, thanks Chad. I just thought I'd make my presence known at the, at the start of the public hearing. I certainly, I think I've met a number of you. I'm Jesse, the project developer, but I also want to make my presence known to the folks here today. I'm joined by Kyle, who's our counsel from Denton's, specializes in renewable projects here in Indiana, as well as Trina Rubigus, who's our development consultant, as well as Sarah as well, who's one of our development partners on the project. You know, as Chad mentioned and county attorneys mentioned, you know, this is, there was already a previously approved preliminary resolution. This is the confirmatory resolution. And in combination with this, there's an economic development agreement, which statutorily, you know, by, by the Wells County ordinance, we've needed to go through to make sure that the county has an opportunity to advocate for their kind of, the financial paradigm that they want, of which the commission has also motioned their approval. So I don't want to talk too, too much about the project, but I just want to introduce myself. And after the public hearing, I'm happy to come, come back up and answer more targeted or specific questions about the project that you have or that some of the constituents here have brought up. I'll just say high level, you know, this, although there is sort of this tax, certainly this tax mechanism at the start of the project, over the life of this project, this project is expected to be a 30 to 39-year design life project that would be over $110 million in tax revenue to the county. So really, this is part of the incentive structure that you all have, and your leadership's advocated for, to kind of bring a long-term tax-paying entity to the table here. And I'll additionally say, you know, this is not the approval of a project. This is just the financial paradigm that the county, in consultation with the county attorney, has kind of advocated for here today. So I'll pause there and turn it over to whoever else wants to speak. But just wanted to make myself known and happy to come back up and answer any questions that come up that could be helpful to have a developer perspective. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is Rick Hall from Barnes and Thornburg, who represented the county in negotiating the economic development agreement. I'd be happy to talk about that and how the abatement that's under consideration is included in that agreement, either now or when the resolution is presented, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, let's hold off, Rick.
Good evening. My name is Becky Bechtel, and my address is 6046 Meridian Street, West Drive in Indianapolis, Indiana 46208. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Indiana Land and Liberty Coalition. What we are, we are a grassroots coalition consisting of farmers, landowners, private property rights activists, and most importantly, conservatives. What we do is we travel the state to attend meetings like this one, and we do it with passion in order to advocate for the private property rights of our members to ensure those rights are protected from government encroachment. We believe that farmers and landowners should have the right to do as they please with their land. If they choose to farm crops, they should be allowed to do so. If they prefer to farm the wind or the sun, they should have that right as well. The proposed economic development agreement would bring in an anticipated $90 to $110 million over the life of the project to Wells and Huntington Counties. The majority of this money would go to Wells County, benefiting a number of county services, including your schools. The landowners have chosen to be part of this project for a number of reasons, the long-term impact of EDF's investment being among them. Therefore, tonight, I ask you to adopt this economic development agreement. And doing so will not only bring significant revenue into the county, but also help families to keep their family farms. I want to thank all of you tonight for allowing me to speak with you and serving the people of Wells County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Trent Lehman. I'm the new superintendent at Southern Wells Community Schools. So I'm speaking on behalf of Southern Wells. We're excited about this solar project. We understand it's going to increase the assessed value down in our school district. And so what, the main thing that we want to ask is that we can be at the table with the money you are receiving, since it's in our district, to get ideally a proportionate share that we would have got if it wasn't abated. And so we just, we again appreciate that this, this project is coming to our district. We see the long-term benefits of that with the assessed value and reducing tax rate. And we just want to be at the table as that money's distributed. So, thanks.
Thank you. Great comment. Evening.
My name's Bruce Motts, and this particular project has not really harmed me in the location I'm at, but there's another project down the road that is. The Area Planning Commission has put money into area online polls, and I think Southern Wells County spoken very highly of the residents that actually live there, that they do not want solar farms. Solar use on your personal use, on your businesses, that's fine. But if anyone would drive down through Randolph County and see what these farms look like, I just spent my life savings and built a $300,000 home that they want to surround my house with solar farms. Across my street, they want to put solar farms. That is going to depreciate my value of my home tremendously, I believe. I just, I just want to let it known that, you know, there was a poll and, you know, the residents of Southern Wells County are against it. I do believe you own the property, you can do what you want, but a lot of these people are not residents of Wells County. They don't vote for us. You know, big government came in and said, hey, counties, it's off your hands. We're going to bring in solar, and we're going to bring in wind, and nothing you can do about it. I believe the only thing we can do about it is don't give them tax abatements. Let them pay as they go, just like everyone else. I don't know if that matters. I don't know the legal limbo jumbo of everything, but I do know there, an eyesore, they're going to depreciate the value of my property tremendously if the one goes that's around my house. And I just wanted to let my word be known that, you know, the people down there don't want it, and we're the people to vote. All right?
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Leslie Gaskell. I live in Harrison Township, and I just have some questions on how a tax abatement works. Could somebody here kind of walk me through why you would give a company a tax abatement, you know, and how this works? Is any one of you here willing to do that?
I want Rick to address that question. Sure. Hey, Rick.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that. So the way a tax payment works is that as a project is built, it then creates assessed value that is subject to taxation by the, by the county through local property taxes. The tax abatement provides them a deduction that reduces the amount of that assessed value, and then thereby reduces the amount of their property tax bill. In this case, a proposed abatement is for 100% for 10 years. The company, while it will not pay property taxes during that period, it has agreed to make economic development payments to the county that provides funds that the county can use to complete other projects. So they still would be contributing financially to the county. It'll just come in the form of this economic development payment as opposed to a property tax payment. In addition, the, when a solar project is completed, the assessed value right now on that land is at the ag rate and agricultural rate. And when the solar farm builds, the land on which the project is built converts to a, a solar land rate, which is significantly higher than the agricultural rate. So the assessed value for the land is going to increase significantly. That increase in assessed value, unlike the assessed value for the improvements, that assessed value increase with respect to the land cannot be abated. So its assessed value will be contributed to the general tax base of the county and will reduce the tax rates for all taxpayers in the county. Obviously, when the abatement rolls off, then the assessed value from the project itself will also contribute to the tax base of the county and provide tax rate relief.
I see what you're doing. You're, you're kind of, you know, you're wanting to generate some money in here. If you did not approve of a tax abatement, this company has talked about monies that would come into the county. And those monies, where does it go in the county if it is not through a tax abatement? I have read in the paper that, you know, they can, we can up to maybe, what is it, 8 million, 11 million, that we could actually receive, is that right? For this county, okay? Now, where does that money go? Does that go to the whole county?
Yeah, because of the general fund in which this council will be in charge of operating those funds when the time occurs.
Now, if it's a tax abatement, let, I'm sorry, if they do not get a tax abatement, let me think here. Okay. If they pay, pay their taxes and they don't get a tax abatement, they just pay their taxes, does it, does that money still go into the county?
No. In a way, Chad, if you wanted to...
Does that money go? That's kind of what I wanted to know.
Chad talked about this when Commissioner Stringer asked the same question earlier.
Who are you?
I'm the economic development director for the county. So, so, so the answer to your question is yes and no. So the county still receives the revenue, but it's, so...
From the taxes, if they had to pay taxes?
Correct. However, what happens is that the project's total assessed value is included into the county's total assessed value, which determines a tax rate.
Okay.
So what happens from this project is that the tax rate might not go down because of the tax abatement.
I wanted to know where the money goes, though.
The money still goes to the county. The proportion of the money and who pays what just changes. So what happens if this project was not to receive a tax abatement, it would impact the tax rate by lowering it significantly. So their tax bill would be different, your tax bill would be different. So the county budget, let's just throw out a number, say a million dollar budget, it's probably more than that. So if the county's budget was a million dollars, they're going to determine a tax rate based off the county's budget of a million, the library's budget of a million, the township's budget of a million. And then they, the, the state determines a tax rate and says, now this is how much everybody pays to get to this total budget value. So the project, while it might have a significant tax bill, everybody else's tax bills would likely decrease, meaning that the county still sees the same bucket of money at the end of the day. So this is not dollar-for-dollar revenue to say, well, they're going to get a $10 million tax bill, just as hypothetical, and the county's now going to see $10 million of new and more revenue. That's not how Indiana taxes work. So...
Yeah. Yeah, I, even though I didn't understand everything you said, I still kind of get the gist of it.
Yeah. So the proportions of money are just spread out differently. The bucket of money stays the same.
Okay. But I guess my question really is, is if you do not give them a tax abatement, and they do go ahead and just pay taxes like anybody else does, where does that tax money actually go in this county?
It still goes to all of the taxing entities, but it's still, it takes, so there are maximum tax levies within the state of Indiana that say that the budget is, the money that the county can receive is still subject to whatever the state says that it can receive based off of a specific gross quotient. So again, so if, if we're going to make this easy, and the county has a million dollar budget, and Blake and I are the only two paying, and now you come in, the budget's still a million dollars, we're just paying a different proportion of that million dollars. That's how Indiana taxes work through the, again, it captures assessed value that is then disproportionate to, or proportioned out through tax rate, the bucket of money stays the same.
Well, you know how like, in this county, there's like three groupings? You know, there's the Norwell area, then there's the Bluffton...
Well, there's really actually 26 taxing entities in the county roughly, correct? So there's all the townships, there's the library, there's the school corporations, there's the county, there's the municipalities, there's all of those things that create their own tax rates.
So are all those entities that you're talking about, do they reap revenue then from the tax, the tax money that comes in?
Based off the total assessed value that determines tax rates, yes. But they're not, so again, if, if this project had, so again, if, if the county has a budget of a million dollars, and let's say their tax bud, or their tax bill is, we're going to say 10 million, the county now doesn't have $11 million in the, in the, in the bank.
You know...
Because it wouldn't have a $10 million, it would take a million dollars based off of us three and determine a new tax rate to get to the same million dollar value.
I live, I live in...
That's spread out between the taxing entities.
I live in Harrison, and the taxes I pay go to what, towards Bluffton, Harrison?
The school, the library, the sewer district, or not the sewer district, but the solid wage district, the county.
If I lived in Norwell, what would my property taxes go to?
It would go to the county, the library, the, the difference, the only difference between the two is Harrison Township and we'll say Lancaster Township gets their tax revenue instead of, instead of Harrison Township. The township itself gets your tax revenue, and the school district gets your tax revenue.
So if this is in Southern Wells, I guess what you're saying is, is that money still goes to the library and their fire departments?
The same money, yes.
And different things like that?
Correct.
So I guess what I'm trying to determine, if tax, if you give them a tax abatement, they're giving us what in return then?
8.5 million dollars. So the county sees actual revenue growth from the EDA agreement in, in the form of the 8.5 million.
8.5 million? Now, in this, how long is this project? 40 years, 39, 40 years? So that's in a 40-year period, is what you're saying?
So the tax abatement is for 10 years. And then once, again, once they roll on after the 10-year period, tax rates will be reflective of that assessed value, whatever it is at that time, and tax rates have the potential of decreasing at that point.
Yeah.
And so, but over a five-year period or a four-year period, depending on when the project starts, the county will receive four or five payments totaling $8.5 million once the project starts.
And then, and how often will the payments?
The first one at construction, the second one two years after construction, and then a year each year thereafter until the payments...
So within a 10-year period?
Oh, yeah, within a five-year period. Their first five years of the project.
Okay, then...
Or six years of the project.
Is there anybody here that could tell me if they paid taxes and not get a tax abatement? How much money we're talking?
I don't understand your question. How much would they pay?
Yeah.
We won't know until the tax rates are determined.
You can give me an idea, can't you?
I can give you a rough idea based on today's tax revenue.
Well, just go with that, then.
Yeah. So over the, over the 10-year period, it's roughly $10.1 million. And during that same 10-year period, essentially, the county's receiving 8.5. So their value, if they were to do a 295-megawatt assessed value at $300 million project, it would be roughly $10.1 million. The county's getting 8.5, so the county's getting roughly 86% of what they would have paid in taxes. But again, it's actual revenue the county has the ability to see and utilize versus if it came in tax revenue, it would go into a, it would be dispersed out in lower tax rates, and the county wouldn't actually see an increase of revenue.
Plus assessed value goes up in the front.
Correct. Plus, they see, again, the tax rates are already going to be reflected on a positive, or actually, they'll decrease slightly because of the increased assessed value on the land because you can't do a tax payment. because you can't do a tax abatement.
Now, the landowners, they still pay, like, property tax?
The company, I believe, is paying.
Oh, the company does that, too?
They pay that.
They don't pay, so...
The company is assuming the tax bills on behalf of the property owners.
And the property owners just get money, they're, that's pretty much...
There is a negotiated lease agreement, yes.
Yeah, there was a picture in the paper of the area that they said they would like to...
Yeah, so that area is not specific to, is only specific to saying this is an area where they're looking at having conversations or have had conversations with landowners. It doesn't mean that all of that land is going to be covered in solar panels.
How much has been actually agreed leased?
Do you know how much?
So, we currently have 12 landowners that have signed up in Wells County.
How many acres are you talking?
About 3,000 acres have signed up.
And is that all in that one area there that was in the paper?
They're within that, the economic revitalization area.
So, that's not down by the Southern Wells School?
No, it's on the Huntington County line mostly at 218.
Three sections south of 218 and the rest north of 218.
Yep.
Okay, because from time to time, we try to check and see, but apparently, they don't turn that all in, so we really don't know how much left, what's left. Can you ask for, can you give us a map of what's been leased? According to that map, there's very little, but you're telling me there's a lot more.
We do, there's been a number of landowner partners that have signed up for us.
How many have, how much land has actually signed up?
About 3,000 acres.
They have actually signed the leases, 3,000.
What you're stating is they may not be recorded.
Yeah, yeah, and this is, and, and do you say it was 12?
There's 12 landowners.
And out of those 12, would you say they all have an even amount of land in there? Or are there some, maybe they only have a little bit? And there's some families that trust, you know, people that don't really, like, live around here type thing?
There's a couple of landowners that haven't seen it.
Yeah, okay. Well, I've been down and looked at the solar farm down south, and there's also landfill down there, right with the solar farm, and then there's wind turbines, I mean, it looks like kind of, you know, another planet, really. I couldn't help but notice that the landfill looked so much better, actually. It had a nice chain link fence around it, there was a nice area from the fence to the road, it had been planted with trees staggering, nice trees, and it was actually pleasant to the eye, it really was. But when you looked at the solar farm, they, have you been down there to see that?
Have I?
Yeah.
I, I have not.
Have you been down there to see that? Have you been down there?
I've been down to that area. I've got a brother that lives right down that area.
Right, does he live right in it?
He's just south of it.
What about you, sir?
No.
Probably don't matter, but...
I think I do.
Here you do. Have you seen it?
I have seen solar farms.
Have you seen this one down here? Have you seen it?
I've seen three, but not that one, and they're all probably going to look a little different, so it's hard to really assess that that one's going to look like this one as well. I've seen a lot of solar farms that look actually pretty good, so it's hard to say because one may not look good, and they're all going to look bad as well.
What about you, Rick? I have not seen that one, sorry.
Nope. And you're all making the decision?
I've seen a lot of solar farms, we've gone through this decision, so yes, I've seen a lot of them. Have I driven down to that one? No, but I've seen a lot of them around.
A picture, or you're driving around?
I drive all over the state, so I've seen a lot of them.
Okay. Just so you all know, I went down there, and like I said, it looked like a different planet. I really feel sorry for these people down there. And they talk about putting, like, trees up, you know, so you don't have to see it, and I thought, well, maybe it won't be so bad, you know, it might be like that landfill and not too bad, you know? But it wasn't that way. How many other of these Paddle Creek Farms have you done?
How many is EDF renewable?
Whatever, these solar farms, how many have you done?
We've done about 30 or 40 large-scale facilities.
Where are they all at?
We work in most states in the U.S.
Most states in the U.S.? Okay.
And we certainly have done a number here in the Midwest.
Okay. Have you, any of you talked to any of the places that he's put up solar farms? What kind of people they are to work with? Are they honest? Do they come through with what they say? You know what I mean? Do a little background check on this company? And then, the other, my other, one of my really big concerns is, is, well, one of the main ones is, is you're taking good farmland and putting up solar panels, you don't make any sense to me to be doing this. This is not, it's an agricultural area, they also talk that there's going to be a food shortage. Have you given any, I mean, I know you can't tell people what to do, although, yet, you do it every day, you know what I mean? I mean, if I want to build right up next door to my neighbor's house, you're going to say, you can't do that, Leslie, you just can't do that. Or if I want an island land, too, out that way, if I wanted to put a brothel in, I'm sure you would be, I'd be hearing from you. You'd be saying, you can't do that, Leslie, and I'm going to say, well, that's my land, and you're going to say, no, you can't do that, and somehow, you'll manage away, you know, so I don't do that, but, not that I would ever do that. But I'm just saying, I do understand about people's rights and their land, but there are other things involved besides just that. I mean, there is quality of life, you're all supposed to be looking out for the people around here. It just seems to me there are 12 families, probably one or two mostly, they're going to benefit really big time, and I really, I don't begrudge them any money or anything, but it's at the cost of who? You know, I just feel like there's been some people just thrown under the bus. As long as we get revenue that comes in, maybe that revenue's going to go towards that road going through Ossian or around that road, or that sidewalk that everybody wants in the next three counties, that's going to be about 80 miles running through people's properties. I know you all want to do good, but at what expense? And I just, I just, I just want to also say that when I was down there and they had the chain link fence, there were trees up. You know what these trees look like? Those really cheap, spindly ones, and they were just directly in front of a house. I mean, if you stepped foot off this way, foot off that way, it was right there. I mean, it wasn't, it didn't even look like they tried to make it look nice, the absolute least amount you could possibly do, and not to mention, they almost looked like they were dying, I don't know. But I'm just kind of, I don't even have land out there, but it just seems like, when it comes to these wind turbines and these solar farms, it's all about money, 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 and who can get the most money, and people live out there not because they want solar farms. And it's the people out, out and around that you've got to be looking out for, you really do. I just really wish you would all go out and have a look at that place before you make a decision. I mean, part of this, I know you guys don't make the decision whether this farm comes in, the commissioners, if I am right, have the ultimate decision, right? You do have the ultimate decision. Two, right? Two out of three is where the vote swings, okay? They have the ultimate decision, but there's also other things that go along like a tax abatement. If you didn't give them one, what are they going to do? Are they going to still come in? How many people are they going to employ? I mean, there's going to be a lot at first, you know, getting everything up and going, but once it's all done, how many men or women are they going to employ out of Wells County? I mean, do you know that yet?
Yes, we know that.
What is that?
They've indicated one to three.
One to three people, okay. Would actually get a job. The county was going to get some money, there's going to be some families that are going to get a lot of money, and there's going to be some people out there, like the gentleman in front of me that sat down and talked about his home that he had just built. Those are the people that's getting thrown under the bus. And I'm just really wondering how you all would feel, is that where you, is there anybody here that's going to be right up against this solar farm? Mr. Andrews, are you? Are you going to be?
This is a time for public input, and I don't feel comfortable debating you in public.
I'm just asking you a question.
I'd be more than happy, after this meeting, to talk to you at length about...
Okay, but you don't want to answer that question, then? Okay.
I live in that district.
Do you live right where the solar farm's going?
Well, I live in Chester Township, and I'm one of the sections that got added to the solar farm, because originally, I thought it was strictly Liberty Township, and they added three sections in Chester, and I'm in Chester.
Okay, did you lease land? Did you lease land?
Where I live is, it's in woods, and I'm sure they don't want that. And my rest of ground is in Nottingham and Harrison Township.
Okay.
I'm from Jefferson Township, so I still live in Lancaster Township.
Northern Northern Wells area. Leslie, we do have a lot of other people also that want to make public comment.
Oh, okay, and that's fine.
We get what you're saying, we appreciate it a lot, but there are a lot of other people that still probably want to make some comments as well.
And that's fine.
I do, I live up in the northern part of the county.
I just, what I'm trying to establish is, basically, it's easy to sit someplace and make decisions, but when you're firsthand affected by it, you're going to view it different. So, I just wanted to bring up a few things, that's all, and I'll just go back and sit...
Yeah, thank, thank you for your comments.
But I thought this was a place to bring this stuff up.
And there'll be another place to bring it up as well.
Okay, all right.
There'll be more public meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm kind of losing my voice, so I typed out my comments, and I'm just going to hand them to you, if that's okay? Thank you. I want to start off by saying I appreciate what you guys do. You know, I know public service is, is difficult at times, and you have tough decisions, and I also want to say that I appreciate the conservative spending that you guys have, the approach you guys have taken over the years, and I actually, I think that's part of the reason that, you know, companies like Paddlefish are excited about coming to Wells County, because we do have low tax rates and, and ground that's probably fit for this type of development. You know, this has been a Republican council, and I also want to say, this, this has been a pretty well-negotiated deal. I mean, Paddlefish is saving 15% of what they would normally pay, which is, is pretty well-negotiated for the county. But it does kind of raise some other questions, as you know, is there a detailed plan of what, where the money's going to be spent? You know, who's going to spend the money? You know, it might not be you guys, because it's the multi-year agreement, who's, who's going to be here to make that decision when the time comes? You know, the taxpayers that are affected by the abatement, are they going to be a benefit from the money that comes back to the county? And then, you know, how Southern Wells is going to be treated, considering they got 61% of the tax rate within that district? Now, I just want to talk, the Republican leadership for many years has broadly advocated for low degree of government interference and large support for the private sector. It also believes private spending is more efficient than government spending. You know, that's a pretty foundational thing of the Republican Party, and I guess I would just propose an alternative plan that would be equal tax savings for Paddlefish. Why not give them a 15-year, or 15% tax abatement for 10 years and let the rest of the assessed value be taxed, which would, in return, go back to the, you know, the people paying, the people living in the district would benefit from lower taxes? You know, it'd be a win for Paddlefish, it'd be a win for the people living in the district, and, you know, I know that the county wouldn't receive that money, but I really, when I have extra money, I always reinvest it in something. I build bins, I, you know, the assessed value, I think, would snowball up in that case because people would invest better. So, you know, just my last comment, you know, do you believe, as Ronald Reagan did, that private spending is more efficient than government spending, or are we just Republicans and name-a-way? You know, do we really believe what the Republican Party says and believes, or are we just kind of see a big carrot and say, you know what? You know, we all complain about Washington, because our politicians go to Washington, and they don't do what they did when we thought they were home. So, just something to think about. The only other thing, I don't need to be a downer, but I've studied your, I, the definition of an economic revitalization area, you know, you have to have four criteria. I honestly, personally, don't believe you have those within that district. You know, it talks about, well, you guys can read it, I mean, that's for attorneys to decide, but it's, it's, you know, government doesn't own land, there's not condemned houses, there's not, there's not too many abandoned houses. I mean, it's kind of a pretty lengthy definition, and I'm not, like, like I said, it's been approved before, but I'm not really sure if it qualifies. So, anyway, thank you for your consideration.
All right, thanks, Todd.
My name's Ben Herman, and I think a little bit of confusion that I'm having with is exactly what the abatement does. If, my understanding is, the abatement only gives the benefit on new products that are being put there, so the panels originally, and fences and everything else, what happens after the 10 years? And so, year 11, if nothing new is added, what's that do? Or anything new added, then, does it get fully taxed? Or how does that work? Because that was my understanding of an abatement, is it's only on new stuff that gets put, because any other business can get an abatement on something new they put into it around here, so with this size of a project, the 10 years after, what's the assessed value going to look like at 10 years after for it to be taxed at? Is that what the rate goes at? Or am I misunderstanding, and somebody can educate me?
Chad, do you want to, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, so the, once the tax abatement's done, essentially, the, whatever the assessed value is at that time, as it's depreciated over the next 10 years, whatever that assessed value would go on to the tax rules and then go on to determine the tax rate at that point.
So, if they got to replace panels at year 11, they get taxed at the full rate, then?
Correct.
Okay. That's why, just, I think there's misunderstanding to the general public, like myself, that what the abatement really is and what they get taxed on and what they don't, and then what happens after it goes off, because that won't be the same value as it was year one, so is that taken into all these numbers that you guys are telling us of what would be saved and what is not?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, yes, okay. And then, I guess my final would be, if we do not give them abatement, does that mean they will not do this? That would be my bottom-line question, is, so is that what it would be? That would be my bottom-line question, is, so is that what it becomes down to, is if we do not give them abatement, they're not going to do this project? Or if we give them abatement, they go ahead with it? Is that what this is determining? Or is that a consideration in this? Or do we know the answer to that?
I don't think we can speak for them.
Can't speak for them, so that's not a, good. It's just whether we give it to them or not, but that's not, they just presented, okay. That's why, I was just curious if this was a determining factor one way or the other, but we do not know that information. Okay, thank you.
Well, I do think that's an important question, it might be good for Jesse to comment on that. I mean, nearly every solar project that I'm aware of has received tax abatement in Indiana, because it was necessary to get the project done. So, I don't know, Jesse, if you have any comments on how this fits into your financial analysis and the viability of the project?
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to do so. I'm also happy to wait till, you know, we've kind of heard all the public comments, and then address the key concerns then, so happy to answer now.
That's fine.
Shelley Mossberg, I just have one quick question. Was this project ever looked at to be going into the northern part of our county? Or was it always just the southern part? Did they look at any other options north? Or has it all been to us that live in the south of the county?
Question for those guys.
Okay. Okay, because I said, you know, that thing about it is, is this happening right now with new members coming in that really maybe are not as first as what some of you are that's been on the county? You know, that concerns me a little bit, because, you know, as you guys know, my husband was on the council. It takes a while to get your, get to know what you're doing, and I just worry about the two new ones coming in that is going to be, they're not going to know where to go, and they're going to follow what you guys are saying. Because they're not going to want to say, oh, I don't know if I really want to do that, but they're not going to say anything, because they're new to this council. So, I'm just curious if the northern part of the county has ever been looked at, so.
Anybody else?
My name is John Maddox. I'm a member of the Wells County Concerned Citizens. It was against wind turbines. We had a meeting at the Four H Park. Les Gaskell was there, she's here tonight, she can verify this. Apex flatly said, "We do not need a tax abatement." So, that's what I'm here to tell you, this group does not need a tax abatement. They're getting subsidized, I believe, by the federal government to put these things in. And here we are again, debating this, there's money there for, they wouldn't be coming in if it wasn't for the money. Years back, maybe '15, the council gave a tax abatement to the power plant in Chester Township for 10 years. Creep's one job, that's what that did. And the revenue for that, they wouldn't even came in if it wasn't for the gas line and the overhead electric lines. This company knows there's electrical lines above, that's why they're coming in. They don't need money. They'll come in if it's there. If it's there, they'll come in. If it's not, we don't want them in here anyways. I mean, we're going, we are taking a beating in the county for the land use, and it's just a thing that the Wells County Concerned Citizens fought the wind turbines, cost several thousand dollars of private residents to keep them out. I've had several people come to me and thanked me, thanked the Wells County Concerned Citizens for what they did. And we might be running into the same problem here with this. Tax abatements, I don't even understand why we're even addressing a tax abatement yet, because we don't even know the foundation of what they're bringing in. And I know you're going to have more public meetings, but to give them a tax abatement tonight is ridiculous. We need to know more about what's going on before this council gives them a tax abatement. Thank you.
I'd be happy to respond if there's, you know, further comments.
Anybody else? Before Jesse comes up? Yep, come on up.
Sure. The 3,000 acres that's signed, is that just in, like Liberty and Chester area, or is that more well, too? So, just down by Liberty?
Jesse, come on up.
Okay. So, President Higgins, would it make sense to close the public hearing if there's no further comment, and then the council and?
Yeah, we can, okay, we can do that. Anybody else before I close the meeting?
We might still have more questions, can we still ask questions?
Okay, we're going to close the public portion of the meeting then. I appreciate all the comments that were made tonight, and the public hearing is now closed. Jesse, go ahead and.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thanks to everyone here that's come and participated today. As has been mentioned a couple times, there's going to be a number of future public meetings, and we do look forward to kind of hearing more of these concerns and talking through them. You know, part of what we do, as part of our broader development plan, is we do intend to have a large public interest meeting with notice sent to everyone within at least a mile of the project, to kind of introduce, when it's ready, more about the site design and things like that, and integrate feedback for those that are closest to the project. So, I'll answer some of the questions here today, to the best of my ability here. I think there was a couple things sort of brought up about, you know, why do we need tax abatement, and why now? And I think I would just point to a couple things. One, you know, as we look at sort of the ordinance that the Wells County Zoning Commission has put in place here, there is an ask for this economic development agreement to be done before we would ever submit a permit, as well as a road use agreement and decommissioning agreement. So, these agreements are all, as mentioned, you know, highly negotiated, you know, the reason the ordinance has that is it's so that the county does have a say in the financial framework that they would want if this project was ever built. As well as to ensure that, you know, the road use is adequately repaired, and that, you know, they're not approving a project that doesn't have decommissioning surety and things like that in place. So, I would just first start by saying, you know, we are kind of doing our best to follow the rules that have been set for us. And really, this has just been a negotiated process, you know, with the county leadership to do just that. Now, as Rick mentioned, you know, there's virtually no projects, certainly there's none to my knowledge, and as Rick's mentioned, that have gone through without tax abatement of some sort here in the state of Indiana as it stands. If you think about sort of the cash outlay for solar, right, it's a large capital investment upfront, and then it takes years, decades for us to make our money back, right? We don't have operating costs like coal and natural gas. We just got very expensive equipment, and then it's really, you know, we're banking on the sun to help make us money over the years ahead. So, much higher upfront capital expenditure, and so, you know, this first 10 years is when we're really in the red the most, and need a little bit of help to make things happen, right? So, that's really what it's about. But furthermore, you know, we don't want to be, EDF certainly, and I mean, I can't speak for all development trusts, but EDF in particular does not want to be the type of developer that shows up promising the moon, and it never happens. You know, we do want to make sure that our projects are competitive versus other developers that are developing in and around Indiana, as well as the country, right? And part of that, you know, a competitive abatement package allows us to sell competitive rates of power. Without that, we could sit here, we could promise you the moon, we could promise you we're going to pay full taxes, but then the project is unlikely to get built, and then we've really done nothing for our reputation, and nothing for really bringing what's not just a 10-year economic development payment scheme, but really 39 years of revenue that we're ultimately trying to get off the line, off the ground. I'll say one more thing here about sort of just general location selection, and actually, this presentation was given to the council, but on the second page here, or rather the third, you know, Wells County has gone through a comprehensive plan out till 2035 that I know Chad has chaired, and I know there's been a lot of survey data that's gone out as part of that. And as part of that, you know, there is sort of solar siting guidance that we've kind of fit into, hopefully, well here. I think, one, it sounds like Wells County is really actively, you know, there was some mention of the wind project, but really actively pushing towards solar rather than wind, right? So, we've kind of, EDF does solar, wind, offshore wind, we do all that, but Wells has said, no, our preference is going to be for solar in the right places. But moreover, that the siting of said solar is done in these low population density areas, away from Liberty, certainly away from Bluffton, and some of the more urban centers. So, we've done that. We are in sort of some of that green zone, and away from any planned infrastructure projects and things like that. So, I would highlight that some of that zoning has done, been done, in addition to sort of the landowners that have agreed, hey, we want to do this, some of that siting's been done kind of in consultation with the areas in which Wells County said, hey, if there's going to be a potential project, you know, please, please check this out. So, I'll say one more thing here about, you know, I think there was maybe some comments about what the solar project looks like, and this and that. I was just looking at the solar ordinance that you have for us, you know, that does mandate 400 minimum setbacks from non-participating residences, as well as vegetative screening, that is a minimum of six feet high, growing up to 20 feet at full duration. So, that is, I just would share, that is at the minimum that we're going to have to do.
400, not two?
400 feet from non-participating residences. Yeah, that's correct. I think it's 400 feet from the residence itself, is I understand it, yeah. So, yeah. So, I just would highlight that, you know, those being sort of the minimum specifications, and part of said, you know, future public meetings and things, is if there is situations where, you know, somebody, somebody's, all of their neighbors have signed up around them or something that we make further amendments than that, but just would share that that's a minimum statutory requirement that we're going to be, you know, doing future design based on it. So, that's all for my questions, but certainly happy to entertain any more from, or all my answers, rather, any more that you might have.
I appreciate that. Does anybody have a question for Jesse right off, while we can get this out of the way?
Will you come in if you don't get a tax abatement?
So, as mentioned, we cannot get our permit without an economic development agreement with the county, so we would not be able to get our permit without this in place. We would not be able to proceed with the project without an economic development agreement.
You're saying that the county has to give you a permit first, before you get a tax abatement, or where are you going?
We need to have an economic, so the economic development agreement, so just would highlight that, you know, there is a tax abatement component here, and really, what's being approved tonight is the economic revitalization area that supports that, right? But, but really, that economic development agreement is really around sort of the payment structure associated with that, right? As well as, you know, our pledge to minimumally invest $250 million, create one to four jobs, and all the other economic benefits that come with, you know, a one to two-year construction timeframe. So, you know, it's part of a broader package, but it is, it is one that we need to be in agreement with to continue.
It's my understanding that the council tonight is going to make a motion or not a motion for a tax abatement, does that prove, Steve?
I was going to say, do you want to go into that next?
Well.
Or do you want to take some time?
We'll get to that.
I just didn't know where you wanted to be on the agenda, I know that was near the top of the agenda, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to start your meeting, and you haven't started a meeting yet officially, so.
Let's, let's wait until we get to that in our meeting, and then we'll answer that. Yep.
First, Jesse, so if you get your tax abatement and come into the township, then is it possible to have other projects in Wells County as well? Or would this be the only project for you?
So, I think we're going to commence the meeting now, like, it's my understanding that the public hearing part is closed. Happy to talk afterwards.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought.
Okay, so, I'm going to give about 60 seconds. Anybody, you're all welcome to stay for our county council meeting, because some of these issues are on our agenda, but if anybody wants to, has heard what they need to hear and wants to enjoy the rest of their evening, go ahead, and we'll start our meeting here in about a minute.
Just.
Which is part of the agreement, right? How do I address that?
I'd rather be really strict with this.
Or is it a bait?
I knew that was 10, 15 years.
It was about the library. They were wanting to span, I think, global base.
I forgot about you last night. I got home, and Ashley was like, aren't you supposed to be somewhere right now? Absolutely.
Don't you guys have one of those?
She goes, should I leave the stakeout?
Alright, we're going to start our regular county council met, meeting, so if I could have your attention, as is our custom, we're going to start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and a short prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our mighty Father in heaven, we're so grateful to live in a country where we can have public comments and debates on the issues that we're facing here in Wells County. Please guide us tonight, as we continue the rest of our meeting, to give us the guidance in making the decisions for those that we represent here within the county. We ask you to watch over our first responders, police officers, firefighters, and those military that are serving here in the United States, to give us these freedoms that we're so able to enjoy. We say these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks, Seth. Alright, first order of business for council is our November 6 minutes. Does everyone have a chance to review those? And if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. Second?
Go motion second. All in favor, aye? Okay, next up for council is transfers. Council have questions on the transfers that were being asked to approve?
The only thing I had was about the vehicle, yeah, the coroner vehicle, just.
Okay, I know I've talked probably to a couple of you about this, but for the coroner's office, I've been asked to maybe transfer some money out of autopsy and toxicology. I believe that total that I was asking to transfer into a line for a transport vehicle was $18,700. And the reason I'm asking for this is, I've had a few situations. The two funeral homes in town are fairly quick with responding when there's a death, but they also. But they also may be in a service or something, and there's going to be a delay. The one that I have trouble with is in Ossien because they are part of McCombs in Fort Wayne. So I get put into the queue, and then I have to wait. And I waited four hours about a month ago for a vehicle to come and do a removal of an elderly lady that passed away. And it's very awkward to sit there for four hours. We also have an officer that stayed there with me. There was like 20 family members, and it's just a, it's a situation I don't like to put people in. And so, and they also, Ossien will not transport someone to the autopsy center for me. They will only take them directly back to Deo McCombs in Fort Wayne where they do all the prep work for Ossien. So therefore, I will have to call Goodwins or Toma Ridge to do a removal for a different funeral home, and then I get billed 450, anywhere between 450 to $700 for that transport. So if I would have my own transport vehicle, I could do those transports without having to wait. And another situation is, you know, if we have a car accident and we're on a scene and there's a fatality, I mean, there's people that drive by, you know, they want to see what's going on. And unfortunately, a lot of times, some of those are, you know, younger people. And as a parent, I would not want that. So if we could, you know, in that type of situation, I could also do the removal quicker and avoid an extra scene, another wreck, whatever may happen with people driving by.
Where would you leave the houses?
I would probably leave it here because I have deputies too, like in the parking lot here. And then they would have access to that if they were on call, that they would be able to get that vehicle to do it. And like, the two local funeral homes, most of the time, they want to come out, they want to talk to the families, they want to make that connection. But like, and I've had situations where people maybe, you know, I had one from Huntington. Their family, they're staying with family members here, but they're from Huntington, so they want to use Huntington. So now I have to wait for someone to come from Huntington to do the removal, and then I get a bill of $500. So it just adds up with the transport fees.
No.
No, coroner's office does. They may absorb a fee too. Right. They may absorb a fee too, but I definitely am also billed for that too.
Does it happen quite often?
It happens more than you would think, especially in the northern part of the county. A lot of those people do want to use LTs, which is fine, but they're coming from Fort Wayne. And like I said, I'm into the queue, and I don't know what happened that night that I waited four hours. I think there was a miscommunication and I got thrown out of the queue. But that's not the first time that it's happened. And if I have a deputy on scene, you know, they get paid per call, and I had a deputy waiting once in Ossien, three hours. You know, and I usually pay them per call, but then for him to be there that long, I paid him extra because it's not, it's not a typical call. So.
My last question for me is, do you have monies for insurance?
That's, no, this is a whole new thing to me. Yeah, like, I would have to make, yeah, I would have to make, you know, a line into that. And I have a couple of different people checking on prices of vans for me, and I don't know that the $18,700 is going to get me a whole lot that's going to last without having to replace something in a few years. So if I cannot find something, my next project is going to be to just ask for the purchase of a vehicle next year, and just let this money go back into the county budget, and then just ask at the beginning of the year for an additional to be able to get a transport vehicle.
Make some sense.
And the coroner's office has never had one here. A lot of the neighboring counties do have them. I've also talked to Huntington County, their coroner, they just got a new cot, and the cots and the mounts for them are actually pretty expensive. They can run between $7,000 to $10,000. They got a new one, and they are willing to give me their old one for free. So that would save $7,000 to $10,000 for getting the cot and the mount. It would just be purchasing the van and then obviously the insurance and/or mileage, yeah, maintenance, yeah. And it's not something that would be used all the time. So I mean, we're not going to be running around in town, you know, with the miles going high on it. But in situations where we may need to transport and not have to wait, I think it would be very beneficial.
My first thought was DMA, someone who should be in a control vehicle, pay you, but I'm sitting here, it's just going to sit in the parking lot and, you know.
No, it would be.
Are there any other avenues to look at, since it's not happening that often?
It's not happening too often, but I mean, there's situations more than, you know, you would think that it would be beneficial to have that. So.
Sounds like more something to bring up at budget time to me.
Okay.
Else, anybody else?
Hillary, I'm curious how many coroner calls you have this year?
This year, I am up to 46.
Sounds like just a handful of what the types that you're referring to tonight.
I would say of those 46, probably at least 15 of them were used either out of county or from Ossien.
And just the one was where there was a major.
Oh, no. It's happened more than once, yes. The one was a major, it was a four hours, but then I had Cliff who waited three hours once, you know, and I have to keep calling and calling. And it's not fair to the families because they're like, what are we doing here, you know? And it's not going to make the coroner's office or the county look good either when we're sitting and waiting that long.
Thoughts from council?
Only the thought I can think of is that the sheriff's department, they have the, I mean, I'm not, have you talked?
I have. I've talked to Todd Remchisel, and we looked at some of the retired vehicles from the sheriff's department, but they're small, and if we put that cot in, if I'm short, I could drive it. But if I have somebody that's taller, the seats aren't going to be able to go back very far, and they're not going to be able to drive. Plus, it would be nice to have, I do have some equipment, like, we go out on car accidents, things like that. We need lighting if it's dark, that kind of stuff. I have equipment that I keep either upstairs or, you know, at home that I can bring to the deputies if they would need it. But it would be nice to have everything in one spot. That way, we're not trying to get in here after hours to find something, or does Hillary have it? It would just be all together.
Well, I want to be sympathetic to your plight right now, but you've been coroner for a while, and I think this is a better spot to bring it up at budget.
Okay.
Time, and then present that case like you're doing tonight, and we can, we can put it through the budget process. And it probably will be more than 18.5 if you've well thought out process, but I think, I just don't think.
Okay.
Probably put that time.
Are you talking about like budget when we do like next year's budget and just hang out where we're at right now with? Okay.
Seems like faster, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. And I mean, it just, it's a hit and miss thing, but there's a lot of hits where it's a very uncomfortable situation, sitting there, you know, waiting, or they tell me they're not going to transport to the forensic center for an autopsy, so I have to call a different funeral home. And that upsets the family. Well, why, I want to use this funeral home, why are you calling somebody else? I don't have a choice. I don't have any other way to transport. So it just puts me into an awkward situation, and then, like I said, it's not fair to them. They're already having their worst day. They don't need added stress, so.
Totally understand. Willing to listen to other thoughts from councils. There's a disagreement here. You don't have to agree with me.
No, I agree with you in this situation, unfortunately.
I just think to see another vehicle sat around because we got one.
But we can't use that for what she wants to do. Because it has to be, I thought first maybe, but now there's no way you could put what you needed.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, it would be a tight squeeze. Yeah, we've looked at like the dimensions, I've had Todd look, and just wasn't getting anywhere with, you know, anybody that would be taller than 5'4" is not going to be very comfortable driving, you know, a vehicle like that, so.
Is that because the seat has to be up further?
The seat would have to be up with the dimensions of like the cot and the mount. It would push the seats completely forward, so it would be, it would be hard to drive one of the smaller SUVs.
So Hillary, of the, say, $500 average that you're having to pay out, you've had budget for that?
I do have a budget for the, the transport fees, yes, I do. And it's.
About $7,500 if you're talking about 15.
Yes. And like I said, it's kind of a hit and miss on when I have to pay those fees. And I've even had funeral homes locally that'll be like, you know, we could charge you a fee, you know, not necessarily do they do that, but we, you know, we could charge you that fee of $400 to $500. And if I have to call them to transport for, you know, a different funeral home, it's going to be, you know, gas prices, things like that. When gas prices were going up, one particular funeral home was like, you know, you're calling us because if the family doesn't have a preference, then I will rotate between the two local funeral homes. And then they may say, well, I don't want to use you now, I'm going to use somebody in Fort Wayne or something. And so that particular funeral home came out, did the transport, used their gas, went to Fort Wayne for the, you know, autopsy center, drops them off, and basically they're doing a courtesy transport right now for me. So, but the ones out of town will not be courtesy transport. They will, they will bill me.
All right, thanks for explaining that. I think we're just going to push it off to budget time.
Okay. All right, I'll be back.
All right. Okay. Any other questions from council on other transfers?
Are none, I'd like to make a motion except the transfers, excluding the coroner.
Excluding.
Excluding the coroner.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion. Here, a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Additionals.
He's not here.
We had two here, and I don't think Nate is here tonight.
He said he wasn't.
But he sent an email to everyone explaining his, the right-of-way acquisition, and then the department's not here tonight, I don't think. They had one for professional services, so. If there's no further questions, accept a motion to approve the additionals.
I'll make a motion to accept the additionals.
Vicki, second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
For Nate's portion, he wanted me to, for everybody that we did get a grant, we need a cross-exam for $50,000 this year to approve a 450 East 11th. That was the word today.
Excellent. Great, thank you, Sean. All right, Chad.
So in front of you is the final confirmatory resolution for the creation of an economic revitalization area granting, and a granting of real and personal property tax abatement. You conducted your public hearing, and in front of you now is the document for consideration. I know some of you received this, well, you all received it, you just didn't have a lot of time to review it. But essentially, it looks at to create the area that is being considered for the proposed project by the Paddlefish Solar with the, both Liberty and Chester Township, a few parcels there, or the few sections there, as well as the, you received the SB1, which shows the 295 megawatt project estimated between 250 to 200, or 250 to 300 million dollars, and the one to four additional jobs that will come from this project. If there are any specific questions, obviously, I believe Rick is still on related to the creation of the area. I don't know, Rick, if you want to touch on anything specific?
Sure. So the resolution itself creates the site of the project as an economic revitalization area. And then it also approves the abatement for the 10 years at 100%. That abatement is subject to the terms of the economic development agreement that was approved earlier this evening. There's also a place for the president of the council to sign that economic development agreement, and this resolution authorizes that execution by the president of the council. I know a lot of council members were part of the meeting earlier this evening where we talked in detail about the terms of the agreement, but I'd be happy to go through it in more detail or answer any questions.
So, Rick, just for clarity, I assume that the resolution for the final confirmatory resolution will be one approval process, and then the agreement will be the second approval?
It's all in the same resolution.
Okay. So then, oh, this resolution authorizes then the approval of the EDA agreement with the SB1 as well?
Correct.
Just so everybody knows, there's been a lot of discussion about this project over the last many, many months with commissioners, council, Chad, folks from the Paddlefish Group. This is many, many meetings, discussions, and getting, coming to the conclusion of where we are today. So I know there's community questions still about the EDA and tax abatements, but these have all been discussed internally with council and commissioners.
And again, this is the, just the incentive portion that allows the project to then move on to the next stage, and that is for it to be designed and presented through the public process for the scrutiny that will come for determining if the project meets what it should based off of the plan commission's requirements, as well as the county commissioners getting the final say in what that is. So, you know, this is specific to the, to the incentive, to the EDA agreement that's required as part of the process, and there will be a lot of further discussion, and I would say a lot of further discussion related to the project itself that will come once that process begins.
Chad, could you just comment kind of the percentage of EDA agreement for, per tax abatement that we're looking to approve, and where that stands in some of the projects you've seen? Just for everybody's knowledge.
Yeah, so I think it might actually be better for Rick, given that Rick has worked with a lot of these projects across the state of Indiana, and where the Wells County project lands from a tax abatement value to EDA value, and how that compares to others in the state. If, Rick, you wouldn't mind doing that?
Sure. So I have been involved in projects all over the state, from Bozy County all the way to Elkhart County to Sullivan County, all the way to Randolph County. And the economic deal here is a very strong one. It's one that a lot of thought has been put into. As Chad described earlier, the effect of this is to return about 85% of the tax abatement savings in the form of an economic development payment. How that economic development payment is structured has been heavily negotiated in an effort to take into account inflation and the flexibility that the developer would like in terms of start and completion date, the project, such that if it's, if it takes longer to complete, then the value. then the value of the economic development payments increase because of inflation. The economic development agreement also has provisions that were negotiated to protect the county and its ability to capitalize on the additional assessed value that comes to the community, so that there's provisions in the agreement that provide for a minimum assessed value of the project, so that when the abatement rolls off, we're not in a situation where there's less assessed value than we anticipated, so that that assessed value along with the increase in the land assessed value would be available to provide tax rate relief. The economic development payments themselves are guaranteed by the parent company to ensure, to provide better security to the county. And there's also pilot payments that are contemplated in the event there's a change of law that, again, caused the county to lose benefit of its bargain. So I think it's, it's a comprehensive agreement, it's a well-thought-out agreement, and one that stacks up very favorably with other projects in Indiana.
Take it straight.
Any final questions?
There are other questions from councils.
I just think Steve, reiterating what you said, we spent over a year and a half or more on this project. So some people think that, you know, they're hearing about it. We've done a lot of due diligence on this.
Yep. Yeah, I agree.
There's some precedent for maybe other parts of the county at some point that may want to do this.
Yeah, I think, you know, this certainly is the first one, may or may not be the last one, we don't know. I think the county did a spectacular job, and I think the company would agree, although they might look at spectacular a little differently than what we do, on, on the agreement and the fact that, you know, when we started this conversation quite some time ago, the average EDA to abatement value is in the 30% range. And some of those are still being negotiated today in that 30 to 50% range. And I think Wells County has just set a new bar for the rest of the state of Indiana and some of these projects to not only, we received and hit that, you know, plus 80% and plus 85% level, but I think, and Rick can probably attest to this, Wells County's agreement is probably the first one in the state that has a inflation clause within it if they don't start the project on time. So again, I think we've set some precedent across the state with a pretty solid agreement that is gonna be in the ultimate benefit of the county in the long run. I know it's sometimes hard for people to see that right now, but the county will get a significant amount of revenue that will have the ability to reinvest back into the county. But again, at the same time, also understanding this is not, this is not a done deal for a project. There is a lot of work that has to be done before this project really comes to fruition. This is just the first step that allows the project to be able to move forward, because there's a lot of money that gets invested in, in a lot of these additional steps. So you kind of want to know that there's support from the county before they start moving forward and spending and, and doing a lot of the due diligence pieces that they need to do. So, so with that, we would request your support in the designation of the ERA and approval of the SB1.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion from council to approve the EDA agreement, the SB1, and the project ERA.
You want all three?
Yeah, let's put.
It's, it's essentially one resolution, so.
Thank you. Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Let's do a show of hands, all in favor, right hand up. Opposed? Okay, I think we have five, two. Okay, thank you. Next up is the innkeeper's tax ordinance, Chad.
Yeah, so again, in front of you is the, thanks, Rick, I think you probably could go off now if you want to. Again, in front of you is an ordinance of the Wells County Council implementing the provisions of an Indiana Code 6-19-18 regarding a Wells County innkeeper's tax. Again, you held the public hearing in which there was no comment other than my own regarding this request. The establishment of the innkeeper's tax at the 5% gross retail income level is the standard within the state, and so the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the Indiana code that this refers to is a, is a basic code that's allowable for any county to establish an innkeeper's tax. If you were to modify this innkeeper's tax at any point above the 5% level, it requires legislative process. So the county does not have the ability to raise this rate above the 5% without going through a legislative process where a member of the local legislature would have to support a bill to do so. So just so you guys understand this, 5% is the maximum allowed under county control. The same if you were to do a food and beverage tax, that would have to go through a legislative process, it can't be done locally as well. So this has been a long time effort to increase the ability to market Wells County as quality of place tourism assets, not just for weekend, week-long visitors, but what the opportunities that this funding provides is to market Wells County as a great place to live and a great place to maintain and retain and attract new residents. And so this funding will be utilized in a way that is, is at the best interest of the county. It will be overseen by a board that is established by the representatives of the, of the county and the city and the town of Ossian. And we will absolutely report back, you know, annually, as we do with economic development, for how these funds are being utilized. We'll look at reports, we'll look at data to support why this funding has been important to the efforts to increase dollars being spent in Wells County, as well as people coming to Wells County to live and to work and to play.
One quick question, if, by chance, I've had nobody come to me and say they're opposed to this, to this particular tax. If things didn't work out and the numbers weren't following into where you hoped they would be, this could be easily rescinded if needed be? I mean, if it wasn't, if it wasn't going for the, you know, obviously it's for the purposes you intended.
Yeah, absolutely.
There isn't enough money there than, you know.
So the likelihood is that there's, if there's, so worst case scenario, if there's not enough money, which this likely won't be, we will continue to seek other avenues of revenue to be able to support the efforts. You know, there are countless, most of the innkeeper's tax revenues generated across the counties is not enough to sustain the entire efforts that are necessary to do the work. And so there'll be other, other grants, other private funding, you know, other support through investments of things. You know, as we look at our tourism guide that we put together right now, we partner with the news banner to produce it. You know, we may look at some revenue sharing opportunities at some point, we may take over the complete production of that so that we retain all of the ad revenue. We don't, again, we don't know, it's, right now, it's, it's easier to let them do it, and you don't have to worry about whether or not you've raised enough money, they kind of absorb it if they don't. So a lot of those different things are gonna look at, we're gonna continue to look at, you know, the foundation for financial support, other grant opportunities, there's, the state of Indiana has grant opportunities that come and go at various different times. So we will, just like in economic development, we will find other ways to supplement as much of the ability to do the work as we can based off of what's identified through that committee. Our hope with this revenue is that over the next six, you know, it starts collecting in January, our hope essentially is to continue our efforts under the revenue that we have available, Audrey doing the work under the pay of, of economic development, and then transferring some of that administrative cost eventually, but allowing this funding to build up so that in 2024, it has a nice bank account. And so as we start collecting monthly, there's this money that's sitting there in arrears that we'll be able to allow for, you know, if there is some, you know, COVID really had a significant impact on tourism agencies because of the fact that this, this scenario of, yeah, nobody staying in hotels, you're not generating any revenue. But that's, I think, why it's important, in our opinion, that this is housed within our chamber in economic development, because it is a very financially sound organization that can hopefully absorb some of those costs if we need to without having to lay people off like some people had to do during that time, so.
So Chad, during the, the public hearing, you mentioned that at a 50% occupancy rate, it would generate about 93,000 of income. Not knowing our occupancy rate, our hotels here in Wells County, what is the occupancy rate, ignoring COVID, obviously? What is 50% realistic, or has actually been more than that?
We don't know, so, I don't know. I would say it's 50% on some days, it's more than 50% on some other days, so. We, we, so part of the issue that we ran into when we had to hypothetically place these numbers, we tried to get some of that to really get an understanding, but some of them are not, weren't, when you call somebody, call a hotel, and you ask a front desk individual, hey, how many people did you have stay over the last month on average? They just don't like to give you that information, now they forcibly will have to. So there is a mechanism by the county, and that's approved through state law. If an innkeeper does not report, the county has a mechanism to be able to go after them and their receipts to force them per payment.
Can I just say, the imposing a tax is, is a complicated process, there's a lot of organs. Chad did an excellent job, both the DLGF and the Department of Revenue know about this. He made my job pretty easy, getting it all in place ahead of time, but, you know, I, as far as on, on the nuts and bolts aspect and the effectiveness, I wouldn't have any concern about this, because it's very consistent with state law and the state agencies that would be involved in this.
Yeah, and there's 80-plus across the county, I'm sorry, 80-plus across the state counties that have already implemented this at a 5% or higher level, so, yeah. We're one of the few left.
Minority that don't have it?
It's a, it's a tool, it's a great tool, it doesn't cost the taxpayers of Wells County anything, it doesn't cost Wells County anything. It only costs those who stay in our county that are paying it and all other places that they stay in anyways. This is probably one of the best taxes to put in place, because it doesn't impact, unless a local resident chooses to buy a room for the night, it does not impact local residents. And I think that's important as we look at this, is it does not impact local residents.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ask of this tax ordinance.
I would like to be the one to move that we pass the Wells County innkeeper's tax ordinance number 2022-27.
Thanks, Chuck.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, everybody, for the time and the effort, and especially, again, Scott for his, his current role, Chuck for his previous activities and roles, and the rest of the council for your support, thank you.
Correct.
27.
Okay. Sheriff is not here tonight, but I have his numbers for council. Jail numbers. Total of 86 inmates, pre-trial circuit, 31. Trial Superior, 30. DOC, 16. Counties, 6. And DOC 3, the DOC, first DOC I gave you was an F6, the 16. And you have their monthly report. Can't answer any questions for them, so we'll move on. Okay, Carolyn. Sorry it's taking so long to get to you.
I'm asking for the approval of, of an ordinance in order for a part-time person to be funded out of our perpetuation fund. It's something that we talked about at budget time, and in order to make it official, we have to have an ordinance, and also there's a sworn oath by me, the reporter, stating that there is enough money in the fund to fulfill the purpose of the fund.
Okay, any questions for Carolyn? I guess if not, we'll just entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
2022-28. I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Thank you. Trent here? He's back there. Trent and Rick?
Good, great, thanks. All right. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening.
Yeah, Rick Peep and Brink is the CEO of the EMS. I'm the CPA who basically, effectively, the controller of the EMS, and so we're coming back before you just to give you a bit of an update on the EMS operations. I sent out an email, or a memo this morning to Lisa, it should be included in your packet of materials. I won't rehash some of the things that we've talked about before, basically the history and purpose of the organization. But our activity, I think you said, Rick, about 8.4 runs a day, so my numbers are, I basically show a nine, but Rick's a little more accurate at 8.4 runs a day. Of those runs, about two-thirds of them are chargeable, the rest of them are sign-offs, refusals, things that we cannot bill for, courtesy runs, fire protection, et cetera. Of those chargeable runs, roughly, historically, I think Rick's actual number's a little bit less than that, but 59% are Medicare patients, 17% Medicaid, the rest are private pay. As a result of all that, we collect about 34% of what we actually charge. We've gone about, set this year about a three and a half percent increase, but when you collect about 34% of what you charge at three and a half, we don't expect it to translate into a lot of money, but in the age of inflation, you need to do something to stay on schedule with, with the economics. So we're doing what we can. Approximately $629 of revenue per run, but a loss of about $348 every time that truck goes out. So that's not uncommon for our industry. Our neighbors, a lot of them are, the overhead's borne by hospitals, out of which the EMS services are based. But we bear the overhead, the billing, the liability, the health insurance, et cetera, as part of the budget of the EMS. So that's just part of the, the financial. As far as operations go, we still maintain our three locations throughout the county, north, central, and south, to try to provide acceptable run service and response time to, to our county neighbors. So, Rick, you mentioned our average response time is?
Seven minutes, 40 seconds, as of today, going back 12 months. So industry-wide, that's actually very good.
That's to, when you get to the scene?
That's from the time call received until, we're, we're dispatched until we arrive on scene, it's seven minutes, 40 seconds.
And so in order to provide that kind of coverage, I mean, the, the goal is to get a paramedic on every run. You know, that's important, I think that's been, it was a public debate years ago, back when the organization was founded, that's something we're still trying, you know, still, that's our goal to maintain. But as everyone knows, the labor market is very, very tight, and the paramedic business is no different. And so to do so, we've had to face some significant cost of living adjustments to our pay scales to try to maintain people, to recruit and maintain people, so. As a result of the nature of the EMS business, the surrounding counties, many of them contribute significant funding from their county budgets to support the service. We were fortunate in that when we sold the county hospital, there was a pile of money that was chosen to be invested in the Wells County Health Services Foundation. However, as of recent years, the economic realities, like we've talked about, with cost of living, with the wage scales, recruiting issues, we've required dipping into the principal. cost of living, with the wage scales, recruiting issues, we've required dipping into the principal. That's why back in 2017, we started making our situation part of the public record here with council. You've been very good to put us on the budget for $100,000 last year. I understand we're on the budget here for 2023 as well. And so with that, we just want to come back and give you a bit of an idea of where we stand and what we think we're going to need long, long range, if nothing else, just to get on, on your schedule of grants. Our current foundation balance is at $5.3 million. That was at the end of November 30. That's up a little bit, 5.2 million back on June 30. But a year ago, we were at 6.9 million. That's the result of a draw of $675,000 during the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, and a very tough investment market, as many of us know. So with that, our average depletions for our 22-year history has been about $170,000. The support of the EMS has averaged about $519,000 over our 21-year history. But since 2020, when things really kind of changed with COVID, the annual support that we've needed has been about $692,000. Okay? So we expect our support to rise from the $782,000 this year to probably $900,000 in the coming years. So we're just trying to give you a bit of a heads up. We've done some longevity projections, and we're projecting 17 to 30 years until total depletion without any county assistance, based on expected earnings of our investment over a shrinking endowment. So county assistance will continue to help us cope with rising costs, total depletion. But at a current rate of depletation, since things have changed in 2020, the assistance we're going to need to make this foundation last 100 years is about $267,000. So those numbers are rough, but it just gives you a bit of an idea. We're at 100. If we want to make this thing perpetual, we're probably going to need a little closer to quarter million dollars as things are currently trending. So if everybody wants to come back to work and everybody wants to go on paramedic and the supply, you know, and if the market returns to what we were, were enjoying a number of years ago, these numbers will change for the better. But we thought we would give you a bit of a heads up. So I've got some calculations in there, and I'm more than happy to speak to anybody about these if you, if you choose, so.
I think the key in this is back when it came to this originally, and being on the foundation as well, is that once that money runs out of money, the responsibility then falls on the total of the county for the whole entire amount. So the idea is funding, we're making progress.
We are.
But, yeah, but eventually, if that room's out of funds, then that whole cost 900 will fall into the county at that point in time.
That's correct. That's my understanding. So. Any other questions?
Any other way to raise funds other than coming to the, the taxpayers, like fundraisers, other endowments, grants, things like that?
Unfortunately, when COVID hit, the government was throwing money out right and left. And we are technically a 501(c)(3), we're a non-for-profit organization, which means we qualify for zero COVID money. There's a lot of grants out there. I've looked at a lot of them, and a lot of them say they exclude non-for-profits. I don't exactly know why that's true, but I've looked at grants over the years quite often. They are shrinking up. They're getting smaller and smaller, harder to find. Those that are out there, we don't qualify for.
Process happening there, I mean.
And I think some of the grants too, that we have, the problem is they won't give money for general operational expenses.
Yeah.
They want to be for like maybe equipment or ambulance.
Yeah.
That's the other hurdle against too, is that they won't give money for general operational expenses.
About Wells County Foundation, there's unrestricted funds. I mean, I don't know if you've asked.
Could certainly chat with Tammy and see if there's anything available there.
Another thing, it seems like the problem is insurance isn't paying what you're charging.
Correct.
So I assume that your charges are probably in line with what most other ones are.
They are. And, and the majority of our runs being Medicare, Medicaid, you know, they're going to pay what they pay. An example is if we have a $1,500 bill, we're going to get maybe $300 for Medicare and maybe 90 for Medicaid.
And it wouldn't matter if you're billing 10 years.
No, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, they're going to pay what they're going to pay.
So raising rates or charges isn't going to change anything.
Right.
They're only going to pay so much.
Right. Now, if you want to toggle Washington and have them raid the Medicare and Medicaid funds, then, then we're good.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
They have to raise those in 20-some years, so.
I did hear there's probably a phrase in that coming in the next.
There's a study going right now, so we'll see what that study does.
It could be significant if they do.
Right, let's all hope.
They'd give money to everybody else, so. Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate the update.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thanks.
Good work. All right, we're up to Connor.
Right.
Been on pins and needles.
I think I made Lisa mad. She put me at the end of the list tonight.
What did I do?
Thanks for inviting me. Appreciate being here. Wanted to give you guys an update on how the highway garage is progressing. To date, cold storage foundations are complete. The cold storage building is on site, so is the insulation. And I anticipate that the erection of that building should start on Monday. The salt storage building, the pad is complete, the foundations are complete, and T panels finished installed today, which are the divider panels that separate the salt from other materials in there. The slab, if we can squeak it in before weather gets awful, will be poured here shortly with steel erection and fabric following that. The main building foundations have started, and the building is set to arrive on December 19. And excavation and site development work continues. Overall, the project is on schedule. There seems to be plenty of time in the schedule that was set out originally. So I'm actually hoping for a fall finish of next year, but the actual end date is in February. So we're in good shape. Everything seems to be moving along. We don't, we haven't had any overruns on budget or anything. So we're doing really well.
Good.
Guys have any questions?
Glad you stayed.
That was a very exciting meeting.
Are you sane? All right, thanks for the update.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Yep.
All right, we are down to miscellaneous business. We have board appointments. I believe we have three tonight. Do we have those in front of us?
Should have them in there.
Digging through. Okay, and did we have any, Lisa, you can probably answer this, other than?
No, we just have the current.
The current ones.
Reapplying.
Reapplying. We didn't have any other applicants. So for the alcoholic beverage commission, we have Tony Garten. Take these all at one time, I suppose, since we only have one applicant on each. So for area plan commission, Jerome Markley. And for the Huntington City Town Public Library, Jamie Hoffman. First two are annual terms, and the last one is a four-year term, commencing the first of the year for all of them.
I would make that motion, Steve.
Motion, yep, thank you.
I'll second.
And a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have seven. Opposed? Okay. The Purdue Extension Contractual Agreement. You have anything to say about that?
This goes to the educators and the embalts that are listed in here. Kind of $19,020 is what is approved in the 2023 budget for the extension.
It all matches with the budget approval process. Okay, we just need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to approve the contract with the university extension.
Okay, we had a motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we have the updated salary ordinance to approve.
Okay, yes, for 2022.
And a 23 salary.
Well, I think we're going to wait on the 2023 because Colin wants a little adjustment in the back of that.
Okay.
So I'll put that on next meeting.
2022.
The only change in the 2022 is my post-time.
We discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just need a motion to approve that.
I want a motion to approve the salary ordinance for 2022.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Seven oh. Okay, any other miscellaneous business, Lisa?
Um, no.
Counsel, anything you'd like to bring up? Audience, any other miscellaneous business you'd like to discuss?
I was saying, all my years, this is the longest agenda I've ever seen. What about you, Jim?
Yeah.
That's definitely.
You're the better ones.
No, I was going to say a lot of the interviews, never been that long.
Okay, entertain a motion, adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I was, I, all right.
I know what the potatoes on my house.
I didn't have, I didn't.
It is, it is confusing.
Oh, yeah.
Shane Highstone has got an honor out on the back of the lake. We got some more cooperation.
Unfortunately, I didn't graduate.
Ended up getting an honor, and I never knew there was something like that in there. Very good science.
Yeah.
He's trapped.
I graduated.
Surely somebody wanted to dump trash off.
Right.
I was posted on there.
This is the first thing I've even really knew.
Which is good for peace.